So I'll just kind of talk off that. And what I would just want to say is currently how graffiti is addressed in Cheyenne and downtown is with the opt-in approach where property owners have to fill out a form, turn it in, forms are collected, and over time the Cheyenne Police Department then through their volunteer program go out and paint over graffiti. So what is happening is a couple of things. Property owners aren't typically opting in. DDA sent out 38 letters last summer with only -- and these are to affected properties that had graffiti. That's why we sent the letters out. With the forms, with a self-addressed stamped envelope that said, "Please fill out the form. We'll turn it back in. We'll help you get this graffiti painted over." Only 10.5 percent completed that form, turned it back in, and then those forms, as I said, are collected, and they wait till they get a pile to go out and address it. So because of the poor response, we reached out and reached out, we still have a lot of graffiti in downtown that just got worse over the summer and fall, and it's really, I would say, concentrated in kind of a four-block area in the alleys in downtown. So why do people tag for fame, rebellion, self-expression, power, but to mark territory? And the longer that graffiti is up, the more notoriety the tagger gets. So DDA is putting together a pilot program in addition with this ordinance that's been drafted to take a more proactive approach to this, where it would be an opt-out program and that goes through a notice that sits well with Wyoming state statutes as to how that would work. DDA has -- the board has already approved moving money over from their existing budget to put $5,000 towards the abatement in this year through June 30th with a commitment of $15,000 to the next fiscal year. DDA would contract out for abatement services, and this would not be the paint over. It would be pyrohydro services that has done an excellent job with an organic chemical solution that doesn't harm the historic brick or tuck pointing, and it really does a nice job, as Glenn Garrett, his architect with Histor -- who was really worried about this, was very pleased with the results. So we are hoping for the board's support of the ordinance in its original format where it would be the opt-out. And we know in our downtown -- let me just pull this up. So who are the downtown owners? There are, in the downtown district, and that's the whole big district, there are 447 parcels with six condominiums that have multiple owners on those parcels. And then of the 447, 333, which are 74 percent, are owned by LLCs or corporations, making it impossible to know where the owners reside, as they may have a registered agent, which is very typical in this situation. So many of these could be out of state. We're just not sure. Those not listed as LLCs or corporations, there were 67 out of state and eight out of town, which is 66 percent of the remaining, 114. 22 government, 14 church, and three healthcare. So there is a preponderance of out-of-state owners who may not be as motivated as people who live here and look at their downtown on a regular basis. And so we hope, as I said, that the council will approve the original drafted ordinance where people should opt out. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Duggar? Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other public testimony? Any other public testimony? Chief.
Yes, Mayor, and City Council Brian Kozek with the Police Department. So first, I would probably say eight years now, we've been kind of coordinating the graffiti abatement program. And our program is that we paint over with either white or gray paint once we receive a waiver from the property owner. And on the waiver too, they can also check a box where they give us permission anytime in the future to paint over graffiti. We noticed that in the downtown area, we were not having success in getting those waivers returned to us. So we actually sent our volunteers out, and they actually walked the downtown going door-to-door where they saw graffiti, and they personally handed the waivers to the employees of the business. And again, we did not receive any back. So that's when we actually reached out to the DDA to see if maybe they could have some impact on getting these waivers back to us so we can paint over some of the graffiti. And you heard the results. They were not very successful. I think it was 10 percent return on their letters that they sent out. So thus, I think that's where we are today. I just wanted to give you the kind of the background on that. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you very much. Any other public discussion? Welcome back to the chambers.
You may not say that after this. Richard Johnson, 612 McGovern. I knew about this prior to me leaving City Hall, and I pretty much went to the initial meeting that was set up for the DDA to get feedback, and was actually pleasantly surprised by the reaction of the community that came out for it, but they came out in a different stance. An 80-year-old man brought up "go" signs, a downtown property owner, brought up the potential of turning alleyways into the -- in the downtown core more like what Rapid City has done throughout their corridor. When this was originally brought forth, they said that it was kind of a mimic ordinance to what had taken place in Montrose, Colorado. And I asked at the meeting, "Well, what were the results from Montrose, Colorado?" Nobody really had an answer, you know, to what the results were. And I was like, "So we're kind of mimicking an ordinance change without any actual data, you know, on what the results were in another community?" And I said, "Well, another question I had is far as ordinances went, you know, if you're going to make an ordinance, why wouldn't you make something that was actually going to hold up for the test of time? Sunsets, you know, have never really sat well with me when things are written into city code." And so I guess, you know, looking at the, you know, I believe it's like 276 in the city code in regards to the DDA district, you know, some of the south side houses that were along 11th Street, you know, so somebody, they were talking about when even in this ordinance change that you're doing, when it talks about real property, you know, it's not just talking about downtown core businesses. If somebody's, you know, tagged the back of somebody's fence, that's still real property. That still has a real owner. So actually, after reading your proposed substitute, I favored the opt-in, but I did have a question on the opt-in. I'll let you go ahead and have this for discussion as far as the opt-in. If I was the property owner and I opted into this plan, does that all of a sudden mean that I'm the only one that's receiving a fine? So if I opt out, or I didn't ever turn in any of my paperwork, I'm completely off the radar because I'm not a participant of this program. So by opting in, what it looks like, you know, I'm in favor of graffiti abatement as a property owner, so I opt into the DDA's project, but all of a sudden, does that mean I'm the only one that's held accountable under this ordinance? So am I, under an ordinance, still responsible for a $750 fine, six months in jail, like most ordinances, because I didn't see any provisions in here regarding waiving of penalties or anything like that per city code? So those are types of things that I thought of when I read even the opt-in language for your substitute. She kind of covered numbers, you know, pretty rapid fire as far as statistics go, but and, you know, I was just wondering, you know, she says they've had, you know, a couple of hard, you know, the Plains Hotel, I know that they spoke out at the meeting, and they were one of the hardliners as regards to graffiti in the area, which was kind of odd since the back facade of their hotel is actually the stage where, you know, it was painted to cover up under the mural program. So I guess, just like when I was up there, I always asked the question, you know, if there's, if there's nobody volunteering, if there's nobody returning the paperwork, you know, is it necessary? And so with that, I will end. So, and I doubt you'll have any questions for me, but I'll be over here.
Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you. Is there any other further public comment? Further public comment? Okay, hearing none. Dr. Rennie?
Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading, and I would so move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Rennie, seconded by Mr. Royble. Discussion by council?
Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
There's been a substitute drawn up dated January 24, 1919, which reflects an amendment from Public Service Committee to change from an opt-out program to an opt-in program. So I would move to amend by substitute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to amend by substitute by Dr. Rennie, seconded by Mr. Shaner. Discussion by the public. Further discussion by the public. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Royble.
I would speak against this, the opt, or this proposed substitute. In committee, we talked or discussed a little bit. One of the fellow councilmen said that it was moving pretty fast, and he thought that we should stop and maybe see what kind of results we get. We've kind of seen what kind of results we've gotten. If you ask the police chief, it's been eight years and we're not getting a whole lot back. And the way that they were doing it was basically just painting over it. Here, we're within a defined district that's been, I don't know how long the DDA has been a district, so it's not like we're taking it out and springing it out of neighborhood saying, "Okay, you guys are all in now." It's a defined district. We have it set up so that it's a two-year program, so if it doesn't work, then it just sunsets, goes away. The DDA is paying for it, which is part of the taxes that they're getting from the property owners, and so I don't see a, I don't see a downside to this. If you want to opt out, that's fine. You can, like Vicki was saying with the DDA is, we have a ton of out-of-town owners. We have a ton of owners that we don't even know who they are with LLCs and corporations. So I would like to keep it as a, as an opt-in, or, excuse me, opt-out, and that way, if they don't want to stay in, they can opt out. If not, we can get the graffiti taken care of on a timely basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion by council?
Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
Although I made the motion as, in my role as chairman of the Public Service Committee, I would prefer to see this stay as an opt, an opt-out program also. If you, you know, just look at our, look at, first of all, graffiti is an issue in every downtown, and studies have shown that the longer, longer you leave it in place, the worse the whole situation gets. You know, you can compare it to a virus. It's just going to continue to spread unless you treat it, and treating it as soon as possible is the most effective means. So, and if you look at our statistics, we've run an opt-in program, and we've had the very poor participation in it as a result. And I think some of that's due to absentee landowners, and some must be maybe due to apathy and the fact that people, you know, you think, "Oh, yeah, I was going to fill that out, and it's on my desk somewhere," and by the time they get to it, it's too late. So I think if we're, if we're, I think we need to tackle this problem. We have a way to do it. We have a way to pay for it. And, you know, if there's some landowner that, out there that really loves their graffiti, they can always tell us, "Leave it alone." So I will be voting against the amendment also.
Is there any other further public discussion, or discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Speaking in favor of the amendment, I think there was a lot of wisdom that went into this in the discussion, and I would point to a couple of things. One, it seems rather heavy-handed for a governing body to force a law on downtown property owners that only 10.5 percent have shown any interest in at this point. I find that to be a strange situation for us. Second, sending certified letters to registered agents of LLCs, to me, is us not, not quite doing enough due diligence before we jump into doing a full-blown ordinance forcing everyone into this situation. I think we have to do a lot more on our end under a voluntary situation before we jump into forcing property owners into this. And third, our legal counsel has already identified legal issues with forcing property owners without their consent into a situation like this where we're going to go in without their permission and permanently alter their private property. And that's a very serious thing, and that's a very serious concept for a governing body to contemplate. We're going to go to someone's private property without their permission and alter it, just because they happen to own property in a certain area of our city. So I would encourage my colleagues to stick with the committee's amendment, ramp this program up, have DDA collaborate with PD, try to track down these out-of-state property owners, target the ones that actually have graffiti on their property right now, get in touch with them. There's a lot of technology out there to find people, and let's see how that works for a while before we jump into this compulsory system and force people into this situation.
Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Laborn.
Well, I also speak in favor of this substitute amendment or substitute ordinance. And as far back as I can remember, we've had a graffiti problem. And it just is tough because people disrespect private property. They can be sending signals that we don't want sent as to their turf or whatever. And so having that problem for a long, long time, we've also had another problem that runs right along with it, and that is that we really don't know how to directly contact those property owners. Sending out letters, obviously, in a number of cases and programs involved in the DDA in downtown, have not brought those results because those individuals might not see it. The property might be being rented by someone else. There's just a real problem there of direct communication. So I would suggest, and I certainly agree here with this, that property owners who, number four here in the item, in the red highlighted language, let's see how it goes with the people that want this service, but I agree that it is probably not really in our best interest to make that happen, and it is private property. So I would very strongly suggest to the members of this body that what we need is, and what we've needed for many years downtown, is a true database of those owners. I don't think it's satisfactory for us to say they're out of town. We don't know. As has been pointed out, there are ways to make more direct communication, to be able to talk to them. I think that most of those property owners probably would be interested to hear from us and to understand what we're attempting to do. So I speak in favor of this substitute.
Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question for the chief. Chief Kozek, I'm finding it kind of difficult to believe with all the modern technology, with security cameras, we're not catching more of the perpetrators that are doing the graffiti. And what's your success rate on catching those people that are actually doing it?
Brian Kozek with Police Department. Well, there are very few security cameras in the downtown alley areas. And then over the last nine years that I've been working here, I think we've actually filed charges on two suspects for graffiti. One of them was a felony, but it's just very rare that we would catch them. Most of the artists, let's say, at the time they're committing their crime, are, they cover their faces and their, and their heads and wear jackets and so forth. So even if they're on camera, it's hard to identify them. The way we usually catch them is, we usually get a tip on a certain type of tagging, and then we can link the other tags, similar tags, to that person who we've now identified. But, yeah, it is very rare to actually prosecute a tagger.
Madam Mayor, just to follow up, is it just a cost issue why you only have the two colors of paint?
Yes, it is. And, I mean, we're a police department. We're, we're not professional painters, so we go out and do a quick job of it. And our goal, primarily when we started it, was just to cover it up so that the artist or, at the time we started the program, there were some gang tags. We didn't want them to be claiming certain territories and so forth and getting a message out, so we wanted to cover it up right away, and that was the easiest way to do it. The good news is, there are no longer any gangs in town that are, it's most of the tagging you see, and they're just kind of artist taggers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions by council? Further discussion by council? All right, all those in favor of the amendment by substitute, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. May I see the hands of the noes? One, two, three, four, five. That motion passes. No, I'm sorry, I've got my math wrong. It fails. I'm a little sleep deprived. That motion fails. We are now back on the original motion. Further discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I had hoped to be able to support this, but just to reiterate, I think it's inappropriate at this time for us to be forcing private property owners into a situation such as this, so I'll be against this.
Thank you. Other further comments by council? Further comments by council? Okay, hearing none. We're back on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
May I see the noes? One, Mr. Shaner, case. Three, four, Mr. Luna and Mr. Laborn. The motion passes. I got that one right this time.
Number eight, ordinance, second reading, delegating the review authority authorized by Wyoming statute 34-12-103B to the Director of the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development
Discussion by the public on this? Discussion by the public. Okay, hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of Public Service Committee is to approve on second. I would so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Rennie, seconded by Mr. Shaner. Discussion by council. Discussion by council. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr., excuse me, Dr. Rennie, is a no.
Number nine, ordinance, second reading, pursuant, pursuant to section 2.2.2, Plan Development Regulating Plan and Section 5.6.2 PUD, Plan Unit Development District of the Cheyenne Unified Development Code, UDC, amending ordinance number 3741, which established the Village Planned Unit Development PUD by adding indoor entertainment as a land-use category permitted by right for lot 28 of block two of the Village PUD, adding a new section 5.11 to defer to the UDC standards where the PUD is silent on development standards and pursuant to section 2.2.1 of the UDC, amending the Village PUD map to reflect lot 28 instead of lots 30 and 31 of the Village subdivision for the subject parcel, Cheyenne, Wyoming, located west of and adjacent to Powderhouse Road, south of Old Town Lane.
Thank you. We've got a staff report on this.
Yes, Alessandra McCoy, Assistant City Attorney. Based on the comments that we received at Public Services, my office met with planning and development and came up with a substitute, which I circulated late last week. You all should have received a copy of it in your inboxes, and it reflects some of the comments made about designating this as a conditional use in this PUD rather than a use by right. If you have any questions, myself is, myself is here. I am here. Susanna is here. And, yeah, we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Through you. Through you, Ms. Fackelman. The...
My new name.
Yes. I'm trying to get used to that. So during committee, just for the information for the rest of my colleagues, the original proposal was to add indoor entertainment as a, as a use by right into this lot.
Right.
We heard a lot of concerns about some safety issues at the other Wyoming Downs location in town, and so as a result, we had a memo from the police chief with, I believe, six specific criteria to do basically a safety, security plan for this facility should this business go in there. At the time, the committee, which you'll hear from the chairman, we made an amendment to have it, to change it from permitted by right to a conditional use because at that time, we thought maybe that would provide more security for the site. And so council has provided us with a very pertinent explanation of these different options. Option one was the original proposal, and then option two is this amendment by substitute. And so just for clarity for going forward, Madam Mayor, through you, if we are in fact to vote the amendment by substitute down that came out of committee, we would be back to option one, original proposal, which would be where if there were restrictions placed, they would go through the site planning process, et cetera?
Yes, Mayor, through you. Actually, three options were presented. The first option was the use by right. The second option was voting it down entirely, leaving the PUD as is. And option three is the amendment by substitute, which I circulated by email.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question, just so that I understand the difference in reading through the options. If we do go with option one and change it to a use by right, if there's, we can put the, we can put the conditions on that were recommended by our police chief, is that correct?
Yes, we can place those conditions on at the site plan process.
And if there's, and if there's ever a complaint or a violation, not only does the planning office look into the violation, but the police department also would look into the violation. Is that, did I read your memo correctly on that?
Yes, I believe so. Sorry, she was talking to me also while you were asking your question. She wanted me to clarify that staff would be placing the conditions if we take option one and go through the site plan process, whereas option three and the substitute ordinance would have been board of adjustment.
Correct.
So we would be making that recommendation to that board. And I think the point that you're trying to make is that staff would be making the recommendations for the security plan, and we place those restrictions on the site plan ourselves and then enforce them, and then, I mean, I don't want to speak on behalf of the police chief. He would have input as to what we would place on that site plan.
Well, to read, to read a portion of an excerpt from the memo, it just says, "Should there be a written complaint about the operation or complaint that the site plan conditions are being violated and be received by staff, a violation inspection by department staff with the police department staff would begin?" So I'm going by your memo, and if, and if we do it as a conditional use, then any violation is just investigated by, I think, our planning office or zone, in regard to zoning. Is that correct? Because I don't see any reference under option three to the police department being involved.
Okay, yeah, I should have been more clear. Option one and option three actually both end up as a citation in front of the municipal court.
Okay.
And that's an administrative process.
All right, so I didn't, yeah, that wasn't, okay. I think that's all my questions I have for council at the moment.
Mr. Bloom.
Charles Bloom, Planning and Development Director. Madam Mayor, through you, to Councilor Rennie. In addition to our enforcement proceedings, we would also notify the Wyoming Parimutual Gaming Association, the group that oversees this. In the past, they seem to be very responsive. In the event there's a zoning violation, they have the ability to suspend a license or operation, which usually is something that gets a facility's attention quite quickly to get to resolution. But again, to echo what Alessandra had mentioned, yes, the zoning violation investigation, it's roughly the same whether it's the site plan or if it's through a conditional use approval.
Thank you. Any questions by council, Mr. Bloom? Okay, thank you. Further public discussion? Public discussion?
Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
Is there a representative here from the applicant of Wyoming Downs?
Is there a representative from Wyoming Downs here this evening? No?
I have...
Could you please step forward?
I have some questions for the representative.
Thank you. If you could please let us know your name and title. Thank you.
My name's Frank Lamb. I'm with Wyoming Downs. I'm a, I'm a late substitute, so hopefully I can answer your questions.
If I may. First question is, what will the hours of operation be?
Uh, normally it's around eleven in the morning until sometime after midnight.
Okay, that, that's a pretty broad.
Yeah, twelve to one. It depends. It depends on the, on the racing signals a lot that we take. Um, you know, the, uh, now we're, we're able to take some signals from Australia, so it kind of, it varies our time, but that's a rough estimate of what it is.
So does the, the current operation on East Lincoln Way close somewhere after midnight?
Yes.
Okay. I'd understood you were open later. So I'm corrected on that then. Um, and I'm sorry to stick you with this since you weren't, weren't here, but, um...
It's all right.
Mrs. Horton, who spoke at the committee meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever day it was, um, had alleged that some of the problems that the police department was discovering with the operation on, on East Lincoln Way was due to the neighborhood, and that it was, um, and that by moving to the proposed location, they didn't anticipate having nearly any of the problems. And yet I asked the police department, do any of the other occupants in the shopping center on East Lincoln Way in Cheyenne Plaza have any, are experiencing any of the same issues? And he said, no. So, if none of the other occupants in that neighborhood are having no issues similar to what Wyoming Downs is, how can you blame it on the neighborhood, not the clientele?
Um, Madam Mayor, uh, I, I don't know, uh, how you would do that. I did meet with the police chief a couple of weeks ago when I was in town and, uh, um, over that issue. And we did come up with, with a plan at that time to address some of those issues. Um, I don't know if it's, um, I, I can't say it's the part of town because I don't, I don't know the part of town. I'm, I'm from Wapiti, so we don't...
That's why, Mr. Lamb, that's why I sort of apologized at the start because I, since you didn't make that statement.
Right, I, I, so I can't help you much on that, but, uh, I, I did live in Cheyenne for twenty years, but it's been a while back. And, um, I can give you a little background of myself. I was the director for the Paramutual Commission that was mentioned earlier for twenty years and retired ten years ago from it. And I consult for the racing industry and, and, uh, I don't remember ever having, uh, in all of the OTB locations we had, the off-track betting locations around the state, I don't remember having any problems with a lot of, of, uh, police calls. So this was kind of a, a new thing for me. Uh, and if it's a, if it was a problem, that's why I wanted to meet with the, with the chief to make sure that we could handle those, those situations. Uh, we certainly don't, uh, don't need to be a, a magnet for, uh, for things that, uh, that are not quite right. So, I'm sorry that I can't answer your question, but that's my best shot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Any other questions with Mr. Lamb?
Um, Madam Mayor, it's not necessarily a question, but, um, well, may, maybe it is. Um, to build off of what, uh, Dr. Rennie, uh, was just referring to, it, it was also brought up in the, in the committee last week, um, by Mrs. Horton, that some of the, some of the, the frequency of, of some of the calls may have in fact been due to what she termed to be, uh, basically an overzealous employee, um, at that facility. So I'm just, I, I, you know, I would, I, I plan on supporting this tonight. Um, I just certainly hope that your organization takes this, you know, seriously. Um, I mean, obviously, if you met with the chief, um, you're, you're certainly aware of, of his concerns and, and his reasons for that and that, and, you know, she did state certainly, and, and I'd like to hear your opinion as well, but, um, she did certainly state that she didn't feel any of the chief's suggestions were, were out of line. Um, I, I just, I, I, I just wanted to say really that I, I hope, I hope that, that, that the stance certainly is that, uh, you know, maybe there certainly are some things that can be improved and, and that's hopefully the way that, that you approach it. Um, I, I, but I was, I, I have to be honest, I was a little bit taken aback by a statement that, "Well, you know, I don't know if there's really a problem. I think this just might have been a, an overzealous employee." So, for whatever it's worth, um, I plan on supporting this tonight, but I, I certainly hope it works.
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cook, yeah, I, I don't know if it was anyone overzealous. I, I think that, uh, possibly, it sounded like to me after meeting with, with the police chief that, um, they, they could have been calling the police when they didn't necessarily, when it wasn't a major thing or wasn't something that police needed to, to, to respond to. But we don't want to, if, if our employees need the police, we want them to, we want them to be able to, to get them there as soon as possible. We have our own securities, uh, guards as well, and that was one of the things we, we were talking to the chief about, how we can, we can train our guys better, uh, is one of the criteria. And we do take it very seriously. Uh, I, I happen to, to manage the live racetrack over in Evanston for the company in the summer, and, uh, we have a, we have a half a dozen security guards that, but, but we have twenty-five hundred people at the races every day, or on, on race days. And, uh, and so we take, we take a very different tact, but, um, but still, I, I think that, um, the security guards, along with the other recommendations from the chief, I think are reasonable, absolutely reasonable, and we need to, to work hard to institute those and to make, make it as safe a place as it can be for, for our customers as well. Uh, we certainly don't want to be a, a dangerous situation.
Thank you. That's, that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Shaner.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Real briefly, Mr. Lamb, um, you just said it, but I want to just confirm for the record. You had mentioned you had gone over some of the police chief's recommendations, and they sound reasonable.
Yes.
Um, Madam Mayor, through you, have you seen the January fourteenth memo from the chief to the city council with those recommendations explicit in them?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilman Shan, Shaner, I have not seen the written recommendations. I saw what the, the chief took down, what his notes were. We, he read them back to us afterwards at the end of the meeting. We all agreed that those were, uh, were legitimate, um, recommendations.
Madam Mayor, through you, Mr. Lamb, I just want to read them into the record because if I anticipate this moving forward, we're likely going to have some site restrictions with these incorporated. So, um, the six that the council has in front of us right now. Number one, require identification for entry. Use an ID scanner to record ID checks and alert employees when a person is attempting entry who has wanted or been trespassed from the location. Number two, employee training on ID recognition and drug use. Number three, extra lighting. Number four, extra security and restroom monitoring. Number five, use of off-duty police officers during peak hours. And number six, use of Sharps container to dispose of unidentified drug paraphernalia. Madam Mayor, through you, um, do those sound reasonable? Are they consistent with the discussions you've had, um, in the past?
Madam Mayor, yes. Excuse me, yes, those were, those were, and I think, maybe you said it, and maybe I missed it, but also training for our, our security guards with, from the police department. Thank you.
Any other questions by council?
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Mr. President.
Through you and, um, my colleague, Dr. Rennie, already kind of hinted at this one a little bit, but I, I wasn't there at the meeting, and I understand that you weren't either, and I don't anticipate you to be able to answer this question this evening, but I'd certainly love some clarification. I, I heard that there were some comments about this particular neighborhood, and that's what happens in this particular neighborhood. And, um, I live in that neighborhood, so, and as well as a whole lot of other people. So, I would love to hear some clarification about that. And I'll like, I will likely be in attendance at the next, uh, public service, um, meeting, and I hope to hear those comments.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lamb. Any other further public testimony? Further public testimony?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address the public about this and the mayor and the council. My name is Kelly Johnson. I live at five eight one eight Sycamore Road. It's about a half a block from the proposed location. Um, and I, I did testify at the zoning meeting. The, um, so I'd just like to reiterate my concerns that I brought up at that meeting. Um, I was quite alarmed at the statistics that went along with the suggestions that the police chief, um, sent out in his memo. Um, the next page of that memo, um, gave out the statistics of the Wyoming Downs location that exists already, and there were a hundred and eleven calls in one year. And even if an overzealous employee was calling, that concerns me if I live a half block from a place that's getting a hundred and eleven police visits. And these infractions were often followed up with arrests. I mean, if you look at the statistics there, sixty-six of those wound up being criminal. Forty-seven of them were non-criminal. So, to me, that's still an alarming statistic for a half block from my house. Um, the, um, infractions were anything from driving without a license to, um, and if I get any of this wrong, please feel free to come up and correct me, chief, when I'm done. But, um, infractions anywhere from driving without a license to heroin dealing. Heroin dealing a half block from my house is an issue for me. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate my concerns about that. Um, I guess wanted to share again, um, that this neighborhood is a neighborhood predominantly of families with young children and elderly, um, retired folks. The only businesses currently on this block are a church, a hospice, a bank, a medical office, Dr. Rennie, and, um, also a engineering office and a case management facility for people with disabilities. The rest of this immediate area is private homes. There is an elementary school two blocks to the west, Hobbs Elementary. There is, um, I believe from other testimony, I heard from another public member at the last meeting I attended, that there will be another elementary school built east of this location once that land is developed behind, it's the coal land, behind, um, behind coals. It'll be right across the street to the east from where this new Wyoming Downs would be, would be, will eventually be another school. So that'd be right across the street, an elementary school, you know? It concerns me. Um, I, I just don't feel that this particular business, while I support business development in, in Wyoming, trust me, I do. I want economic development. I want people to be able to make a living. This particular business at this particular neighborhood doesn't seem like a good fit for the character of the neighborhood, in my opinion, and the direction that the neighborhood seems to be moving with more homes and families and less, you know, businesses. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit of statistics I looked up just quickly today. Over the past ten years, many studies have been conducted by the National Association of Realtors to determine the casino, a casino's impact on property value. A review of the available literature suggests that introduction of a casino to a neighborhood could have a negative impact on home prices between a negative two to a negative ten percent decrease in the valuation of your home. Um, the most credible statistic in there, that would probably be right down the middle, four point six percent decrease the value of your home. That is not some, but my home is my biggest financial investment I have. To see a drop in my home valuation of four point six percent is not something that I could handle very well as a family, um, person. As a parent, wife of a, as a parent, a wife of an elementary teacher, a longtime social worker and a caring community member, I also have concerns about gambling's social impact on my neighbors. While indoor entertainment can be a harmless pastime, a twenty-ten literature review conducted by Community Research Partners of Columbus, Ohio, found that the most clear social impact of casino development is an increase in problem gambling that results. It is estimated that one point two percent of adults, US adults, are pathological gamblers at some point in their lifetime, and another one point five percent are problem gamblers. The likelihood of being a pathological or problem gambler is doubled for a person who lives within fifty miles of a casino. The trickle-down effects of problem gambling are noted to be increases in bankruptcies, foreclosures, divorce rates, poor mental and physical health findings, and increases in domestic violence and child abuse and neglect cases. I would just close in stating that I am certainly not opposed to growth of business in Cheyenne, like I said, and I'd love to see a restaurant or any other kind of business move into that location. It's been empty for a while. Um, but as far as having a casino that close to my home, I am opposed to that in my neighborhood. Um, one last thing I just wanted to bring up because of what I've heard here so far about just the zoning issues and discussions about safety plans. I, I'm concerned that if we let it go into place and we do find that problems are cropping up a lot in the future, it seems to me it would be a lot harder to remove the business once it's already in, as opposed to, you know, heading off those issues now. So, that would just be my opinion as a homeowner. Questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions? Any questions? Thank you so much. Oh, I guess, speak up.
Madam Mayor, and it can wait until council comments, if you would like, but I would like to respond to kind of what she said and clarify my previous comments.
Sure.
Um, and just to clarify my, my comments to Mr. Lamb, I believe it was, um, I live in the neighborhood where I, I, I think that Wyoming OTB currently is, in Cheyenne Plaza. Is that correct? And, and so we get into these conversations about what neighborhood is appropriate for this thing to, to be in, right? I live in the neighborhood where this is now. So, why is it appropriate there and not appropriate there? And that's where I take issue with this. It's, it's, uh, you know, um, not in my backyard, right? Well, it is in my backyard, and I'm pretty proud of my neighborhood. So, I'll just get that on the record.
I, I think I need for, for my clarification, is this a second location? It's not changing locations?
I believe it's a second location.
This is a second location. Okay, thank you. Mr. Cole.
Good evening. Frank Cole, landowner right across the street. Uh, we've worked with the school district for all forty, forty-five years on locating a school site for schools. And we, uh, come up with, and they're planning it for K through four and a five, six school just at the southeast corner of Carlson and Powderhouse, which is just six hundred feet south of this. I don't think things like that belong in basically a residential neighborhood. It's, you know, they don't have other businesses. It's office-type items, not retail or something else that's around there. Yes, the building is designed for restaurant, probably needs to go back to restaurant, but, uh, I'd hate to see the gambling upstairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public discussion?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Joe Speck, uh, with Number One Properties, and I am assisting Wyoming Downs in the purchase of this property, and I just want to reiterate, it is going to be more of the same thing that was there before. It'll be a sports bar, but on the upper level, they will have the paramutual machines. So it'll be a restaurant, um, just like it was before, with the addition of the paramutual machines.
Other questions for Mr. Speck? Okay, thank you. Further public discussion? Further public discussion? Dr. Rennie.
Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading, and I would so move.
Second.
By Dr. Rennie, seconded by Mr. White.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
There's a substitute dated January twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen, which includes an amendment made in Public Service Committee, um, making this a conditional use rather than a use by right. And so the recommendation to the committee was to adopt substitute, and so I would make a motion to amend by substitute dated January twenty-fifth.
Second.
Okay, the amendment has been moved and seconded by Mr. Reible. Further discussion by the public on the amendment? Discussion by council on the amendment?
Madam Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
As I read the analysis by our, our legal staff, um, it seems to me that we have much more control, even though it doesn't sound right, that we have more control by doing this as a use by right, for the simple reason that then... a use by right, for the simple reason that then our staff, which are well aware of our concerns, will dictate what goes on the site plan and what, what gets included. Whereas if we do it as a conditional use, those stipulations, if any, would be done by the Board of Adjustments, and I know our staff would make the same recommendations, but the Board of Adjustments have not heard all the discussion, have not heard our concerns, and we have no guarantee that they would be included by the Board of Adjustments. So unless, you know, several of us want to attend that meeting and present it. So I think I would prefer to keep it in-house. As I said, I think our staff is well aware of our concerns and so I would argue against the amendment.
Other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I concur with my colleague from Ward Two. After further thought and after seeing an explanation from our city attorney's office, I too agree, we should vote this down and go with the original proposal.
Further discussion by council? Okay, hearing none, we are on the motion for a substitute. All those in favor of the substitute, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
No? Okay, that fails. We are back now on the main, the main motion, the main resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I'm gonna move to amend. And so we're back on this original proposal to allow indoor entertainment as permitted as of right on Lot 28. And I will add as a condition that at a minimum, staff will require, before approving a site plan for this project, the six safety precautions recommended in the January 14th memo from Chief Kozak to the City Council.
Second.
Okay, that motion has been moved and seconded by Mr. Weibel. Discussion by the public. Discussion by the public of the amendment. Discussion by council.
And Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
They have the ability to do that on their own, but I want to make it explicit and clear that at a minimum, we expect those six things to be conditions in the site plan. There may be more as this discussion evolves, but I think it's important we set that out now to, at a minimum, implement those safety measures.
Thank you. Other discussions by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
Not sure if this is the appropriate time or not, but I was wondering if maybe Chief Kozak or Mr. Bloom could be available for a few questions.
Which would you prefer?
I would say probably Chief, Chief Kozak would probably be most appropriate.
You drew the short straw, Chief. Come on up.
I guess, I guess my questions are more related, Chief, Mayor, through you to Chief Kozak. Just hypothetically, the, the conditions are met, the site plan is approved, the establishment opens at the proposed location. What then would be the, your agency's process as far as monitoring whether or not these things are done and implemented and, and continued? How, what would be your plan for, I guess, for lack of a better term, enforcement of these, these things you've outlined and discussed with Wyoming Downs?
Yes, sir, Brian Kozak through the Police Department, through you, Madam Mayor. I think it'd be important for us to have a good relationship with management and, and meet regularly and, and actually, we have a police officer assigned to the current Wyoming Downs right now. It's Officer Smith, who, who goes there, if not daily, every other day and meets with management and the employees and, and if we continue that type of relationship. And they implemented these recommendations and just we had good communication about what was going on there, I think it would be very beneficial.
And, uh, Mayor, through you, just to follow up to Chief Kozak. And you'll, you'll have an established relationship with them anyway, because my understanding is that they have applied or will apply for a bar and grill liquor license as well. So I mean, you will be having, I'm assuming, that compliance-type enforcement relationship with them anyway regarding their, their license. So, yeah, I would assume anyway, based on those two things, you'll have good contact with them. Is that, is that, I mean, that's your hope anyway, is that you'll, you'll be able to, to collaborate with them and ensure that these things are enforced?
Yes, that is correct. And, and definitely like, like I do with any other liquor establishment, if I feel there are issues, I would write the City Council a memo and bring you up to speed on it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief. Unless Mr. Bloom has anything to add, I mean, he certainly can if he'd like to, but my questions were, were pretty well answered.
I'm Charles Bloom, planning and development director. Madam Mayor, through you to the council. Regarding another avenue for zoning enforcement, say that police through their, their officer regulating the business doesn't find something, if a citizen has a complaint, a patron, a neighborhood resident that happens to come in and notices that rules aren't being followed, they also are able to use any one of our avenues to report a zoning violation. And at that point, we would then follow up with the police and also with the property owner to make sure they are following the conditions of the site plan approval.
Mayor, through you to Mr. Bloom. I like that idea. I like the premise of that. I guess my only concern is that unless it's maybe someone like, like Mrs. Johnson, who has been up, up on this entire discussion and is gonna know what is required, I mean, the, the general public isn't necessarily gonna know of the conditions that are, that are placed on that, on that establishment. So, yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, I think it truly could be effective, but I'm not sure how effective that would be, but...
Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor Cook. As part of the approval, we could require a condition that those conditions actually be posted on the premise in a place that's visible, and that could be something that's readily visible to any patron going in. So it would be noted and they would be aware of those rules and regulations.
All right.
Thank you. Further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. I, I do not have any, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I was just hoping prior to next week's Public Service Meeting, if staff could prepare a map of the current location and include proximity of any schools, licensed daycares and churches, as well as for the current, or for the proposed site.
I'm seeing some heads nod. We'll get that.
I think that's an affirmative.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion by council? Okay, we are back on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. We are now back on the main motion. Any further discussion by the public? Any further discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Dr. Rennie.
One option, we've discussed a lot on whether it should be a use by right or a conditional use. And we put stipulations on it, and I think that's excellent, but one option that hasn't been discussed is just not approve the zone change request or the PUD change request. And I really would urge my colleagues to consider that. You know, his, history and facts tell us that this has been a problem location. And it is not due to the neighborhood, as alleged by Mrs. Horton last week. It is, it is due to their clientele. Mrs. Horton also said, "Well, a lot of our issues were due to an overzealous employee or manager that would go out and even check for, for expired license plates in the parking lot." And if that's accurate, if you look at the pie chart that the chief has given us, vehicle issuances for vehicle problems were 10% of all the problems there in the last year and a half. However, up to a third of their calls were based on wanted people, outstanding warrants, adding in drugs and larceny and burglary. Those are serious crimes. And so do we, so I guess my question to my colleagues is, we already have one location where we have a serious issue and we probably have to, I mean, 111 calls in the last year is pretty significant. That's like every third day, we've got to show up there. Do we want to add a second location in our community that's going to have the same history and the same pattern? We're already, you know, there's some discussions, I know it's been voiced by the administration, that we may have to add more police officers just because of adding this location. So again, is that a positive for the city? You know, and, and I'm saying it, and my apologies to Ward Three, because again, I'm saying it's not the neighborhood, it is the clientele. Is it more fitting in Ward Three than in Ward Two? No, but we have a location in Ward Three already. We were, they were allowed to go there before we knew what the problems were going to be and what the history has been. And again, I would contend, we do not need a second location in the community. So my point is, you're looking at a third of the problems are serious offenses, significant problems, significant demand on police time and personnel. With one location, I would argue that really I cannot see the justification for a second location.
Any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I should've just told Chief Kozak to stay up here, I guess. If I may, through you, if I may ask Chief Kozak a few questions, just to follow up on Dr. Rennie's comments. Chief, the last time you were up here a few minutes ago, you made mention of something and it made me, made me think of something, but I, based on what Dr. Rennie was saying, Chief, you had mentioned that at least the current time, unless I misinterpreted you, you had stated that you, you basically have an officer, Officer Smith, right now, basically assigned to the existing location on, on East Lincoln Way. How long has Officer Smith been, is that, is that something relatively new that you've instituted? I'm just, I'm just looking to dig down on a little bit of that and see how, how long Officer Smith has, has been assigned and if it has made any kind of a difference.
Brian Kozak with the Police Department. If I remember right, it's been probably four months when we started noticing a trend of the, the higher call load at this location, we actually assigned an officer to that paramutual business and then the other one that's in town as well. And at that time, I know that Officer Smith had made some of these recommendations to management, for example, to improve lighting outside where people were hanging around in the dark areas. And so, you know, we started asking for some of these proactive measures. To date, for example, that has not been done yet up there. That was a recommendation that the officer made. And then, again, part of, you know, possibly part of the reason for the increase in calls too is because, you know, we welcome the calls. We, we told management, "Call us if you have a shady character come in and you're worried about that person, call us," and we're happy to go to those type of calls. But the issue is, obviously, there was an issue because of the people we were contacting there, we were arresting most of them. Either drug possession, stolen property, stolen guns, methamphetamine, warrants. I was on one call myself where I backed up an officer because we didn't have any backups available, so I went. And I'm rolling around in, in the lobby with this guy, had a stolen gun and, and methamphetamine. So why is those type of people being attracted to the business? We gave some suggestions, it's because maybe you need to be more proactive in identifying people so that they know that they can't hide there and do drugs. That if you're proactive in that, you have very visible security that are watching what they're doing. And again, calling us, yes, that's a good thing to do. Call us when you have those issues. We thought maybe some of the issues would go away. The other paramutual location actually is more proactive in that, and a lot of their clientele moved to the Wyoming Downs. And so there's little issues at the one up on Dell Range.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I, I swear on this, on this one particular issue, I'll shut up after this comment. Well, never say never, but just, just to follow up on, on Dr. Rennie's concerns, I mean, I, I certainly do understand that he's, he's passionate about this issue. You know, certainly, I mean, he, he does work in, in the direct vicinity of the proposed, this proposed establishment. And I don't live, frankly, I don't live far away. My teenage children aren't, aren't all that far away from this, from this area as well. But, you know, I, I would also say too, that, you know, whether it is a paramutual-type environment or any of the other bars or liquor establishments that we've had in, in front of us for discussion over the last six years that I've, I've been here, every time we've reviewed those license, those licenses yearly, I can think of about three or four different establishments that we've had this same discussion about whether or not, you know, we, you know, thought they should remain in business, you know, based on, on issues that they had. So I, I just, I would caution us, I would caution my colleagues, that it's not necessarily just a paramutual-type organization like is, is, like the one that's planning to go into this location. You know, somehow, somehow we're making it work with other, you know, such-type establishments and, and other places in our community where some of these, you know, some of the same clientele frankly is, is going into some of our bars and restaurants and for whatever reason, they're making it work. So, I don't know, that's, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. I've been here now two years and certainly we've had discussions on whether or not we should limit what an individual can do with their property, with their business, as long as it's in compliance with federal, state and local law. By and large, I think the sentiment on this council has been, no, we shouldn't limit that. State law allows these types of establishments. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a, a joke out of a very serious situation, but if we're getting such a high-hit rate of arrests at this particular location, seems to me, reel them in, get them off the streets, right? I don't know. Just some thoughts I have and, you know, we're, seem to be applying a lot of if-then logic in somewhat of a fallacious manner on this one, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
This, I think everybody up here takes these concerns very seriously. Where, where I stand is, we are prescribing some very explicit and meaningful security recommendations in a site plan for this project, which is a pretty rare circumstance, but I think it goes to the fact that we know this building's been vacant for a number of years. There's a, a business that wants to move in and we want to see if it can work, but we know we've been provided some data and we're gonna try to mitigate any of those issues. I'm comfortable moving forward, knowing that those site plan restrictions are gonna be in place, that there's remedies that our city staff can take if those site restrictions are not complied with. And then we have a good case study already in Ward Two with Horse Palace, which had, also had some of these similar issues. And when enforcement was increased, the PD and that establishment were able to curtail a lot of this type of activity. So I think there's a precedent already in, in this vicinity of north of Dell Range to, for our city to handle an establishment of this nature.
Any other further, further comment by council?
Madam Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
The last thing I want you all to consider, though, is we haven't had, yes, we've had issues with bars and their licenses at times when we review those. Most always when we have an issue, they're at sale to minors. Right? It hasn't been due to people with outstanding warrants, it hasn't been due to drugs, it hasn't been due to burglary and larceny. And to me, the most damning issue, recommend, thing in all this is, if you look at the chief's last sixth recommendation, it's provide the use of a Sharps container to dispose of drug paraphernalia and needles. What other bar have we ever recommended that for? This is more than a bar.
Further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? Okay, we are on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? Oh, did we do that one? It's been so long. Okay, we're back on the main motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Mr. Laborne, myself, and Dr. Rennie are no votes.
Number 10, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a final plat for Wee subdivision, second filing, re- plat of Lot 3, Block 1, Wee subdivision, and a portion of Track 79, Allison Track, second filing, Laramie County, Wyoming, located south of and adjacent to East Prosser Road, east of South Hurley Highway.
Discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public. Dr. Rennie?
Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to adopt with the revised map, and I would so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Mr. Case? Discussion by council? Discussion by council?
Do we get public discussion?
Public discussion on the amendment? I opened it for public discussion earlier.
Sorry, I didn't, you did, you're correct.
All right. Further comments by council? Discussion by council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
11, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a county final plat for Dustin Heights, a repla-, I'm sorry, a plat of the west half northeast quarter of, the north half southeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 24, Township 14 North, Rain 66 West of the 6 PM, Laramie County, Wyoming, located southwest of the intersection of Bechel and Christensen Roads.
Thank you. We have a staff report.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Seth Lloyd, I'm with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Department. It came to my intention, after the committee meeting, that the intent was to include the revised map on the motion, and it apparently failed to do so, so staff would recommend approval of this plat with the revised map. And we would also recommend that we continue, condition number one is listed in the staff report. The revised map fulfills the other conditions listed in the staff report, but did not fulfill condition number one. For the record, condition number one asks that this subdivision include a connection to the west subdivision, specifically Lupine Trail, which is the southern of the two optional connections previously platted with the subdivision to the west. The recommendation of the Planning Commission was to include that particular connection, and staff's recommendation is to include that particular connection as well. At the committee meeting, that condition was not included after discussion of the committee. I'm available for any questions of the council.
Thank you. Other questions of Mr. Lloyd? Questions? Thank you. Other further public comments?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tom Mason with the MPO. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the condition of the internal right-of-way dedication to go to Lupine Road. Twenty-two years ago, when Metalark Estates was planted, there were road reservations set aside on the two cul-de-sacs on the eastern side of Metalark Estates, which, by the way, I live in that subdivision, for full disclosure. But regardless, at the time, there was foresight to add those road reservations in Metalark Estates on those two roads, anticipating the eventual plating of the property to its east, so that road connections could be made and have a circulation and connectivity between those subdivisions. At the City Planning Commission, after much good discussion, there was a compromise made to only ask for that road dedication from this subdivision to the Lupine Road connection. We believe that was a really good compromise, having one instead of both of them providing a right-of-way within the subdivision. Believe it's been said that, while the county or the subdivisions will never make that road connection on these road right-aways, but I think it's better to fall on the side of that it does provide that connection that could be made in the future when it's appropriate to make the connections. But if it's not done now, it would never be made and never be allowed to happen. So, I encourage you to make that one right-of-way connection as the staff recommends. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Don Edmonds, 7309 East Bridge. Madam Mayor, I'm through you, to anybody on the council or any of your staff members. Is this project going to be hooked up to city water, city sewer, or is it going to be on wells and the septic systems?
Mr. Lloyd, could you assist us with that answer, please? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the property in question is in the county. It's within a mile of city limits, but it's not really that close to city limits. There is no anticipation of public water or sewer in on this plat.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, in that case, then my question is, has the city or the county done a water study on the Ogallala Aquifer that this development is going to be going into? Greeley in northern Colorado is starting to have major problems with the Ogallala Aquifer, and that's only 40 miles south of us. And unfortunately, the water flows down from us to them. And Texas is, in Texas, the Ogallala Aquifer is dry. So, we need to have a study done on this aquifer in Wyoming, because the thing is, is, once the water is gone, we don't have any more people here.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds. Further public comment?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Casey Palma, style surveying services agent for the owner. On the water comment, the gentleman was just up here, we have hired a geologist to do a water study. Because of the number of lots, there will be a submittal to the Department of Environmental Quality, which will study both the availability of the water and the quality of the soils in regards to having well and septic on the same lot. So, that study will be forthcoming, it will be a part of the public record, once it goes through the process with the state. On the road condition, the city staff had mentioned, that had not been a concern at the county, was not a condition on the county plat. The owner was a little bit reluctant to provide that connection, but, you know, we do see the long-term benefit to that. The one thing that I would just like to note, especially as it relates to the condition itself, is that we have mentioned an amenability to dedicating the right-of-way as long as there's no construction expected at this time. As Mr. Mason noted, there's a road reservation at the end of this, at the terminus of what would be dedicated. So, until that land is acquired by the county as public right-of-way, there wouldn't be any potential for people from this subdivision to pass from this land into the land to the west. So, if this condition is added or is approved by the council as a condition of approval, I just wanted to make sure that it was out there in the public record that we would propose to dedicate the land, but there would be a note, and it would be clearly noted on the plat, that we would be dedicating land, not to be constructed for a road. So, that's all I have, or I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Palma?
Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Palma. Mr. Palma, I might be thinking of a different area, but wasn't there, and I very well could be mistaken, but isn't there, is there a, like, an old farmhouse or something that is on the very east part of that property, budding up along Christensen, that the landowner had wanted to preserve and was concerned potentially about the realignment of that north part of Christensen?
You may be thinking of the Geissele Whitney property over on Whitney. They have an old historic house there that I think they were trying to preserve, but that's...
You are correct. I'm thinking of something else, but, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Palma?
I have one.
Okay. Dr. Rennie?
This is straying a little bit, but I was surprised to see, and I guess it's my own curiosity, so I hope the rest of you forgive me, but I was surprised to see that, I mean, my understanding is, it's like 19 five-acre lots, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I thought there was restrictions on lot, minimum lot sizes in the county nowadays because of the, as Mr. Edmonds brought up the water table, the five-acre lots were almost too small, and yet, there is not a problem with the, like, state water engineer allowing these?
Madam Mayor, through you. The minimum lot size required in Laramie County for a well and septic on the same property is five acres.
Okay.
There was a 2014 hydrogeologic study done by a consultant of AMAC hired by Laramie County, and they divided the county into, there's sort of four different groundwater zones. In two of the zones, one of which, this falls in zone two of that study, it was determined that the average lot size should be, and this is in the control area, I'm sorry, of Laramie County, and they determined 5.17 acres was about the minimum for these lands in the control area of the county, but there's no regulation that would require you to be at that amount. So, there's a lot of variables, I guess, would be the short answer, but the rules and regulations and statutes all point to five acres at this time.
Okay. Mayor, thank you for humoring me on that question.
You're most welcome. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Or humoring that needs to be happening?
Just a quick question. The road that's going to go into your subject property that they're talking about, number one, is your, in your property, is that road going to be aligned? Will it be aligned or will it be off?
When the condition came up, we did look at making that connection. I think it's probably about 60 feet, the terminus of the cul-de-sac's about 60 feet north and about 100, well, probably 250 feet east of the road reservation, so it's going to kind of be a S-curve type road, and it'll end up in the cul-de-sac of Cobia Court.
Okay. Just looking at the map on it, it shows that the cul-de-sac terminates where it has access to the house to the west of your subject property. Is there any reason to keep that road going? And I'm asking you to speculate. Do you think the county will ever say, "What the heck, let's build it"?
Madam Mayor, through you, and Councilman Royble was at the committee meeting, we have made it pretty clear, our arguments against providing the dedication, as I mentioned, the owner is not crazy about the idea, and in large part because those road reservations, as we all know, are pretty legally nebulous. So, there's not a high likelihood that this will be connected, but as Mr. Mason noted, you know, sort of better to have the long view and be prepared in the event that something like that happens. So, you know, to answer your question, it will terminate at a road reservation, and it may never connect. So, but if the council feels inclined to have that ability to connect in the future, if this becomes part of the city, or just in terms of good, long-range planning, I think, you know, we can understand that argument. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And just one for the follow-up, and that's that this property, or this resolution, and I think we have one more coming up, that after the January 1st deadline, we no longer have a real voice on this. I mean, we can say we'd like this, but the county does not have to follow any of our recommendations. Is that true?
More or less, yeah. Before January 1st, statute basically stated that the city, that city approval was required for plats within a mile, and perhaps the Development Director could speak better to this, but following, after January 1st of 2019, essentially, the city has a voice, but does not have approval or denial powers.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Palma? All right. Thank you. Any other public discussion? Public discussion? Dr. Rennie?
Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to adopt with the revised map, and I would so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Rennie, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council?
Mayor?
Dr. Rennie?
I'd like to amend by adding condition number one that was recommended by our staff, and that is, connect Lupine Trail with the interior road network of this subdivision as dedicated right-of-way.
Senator, just...
Second.
Thank you. It's been seconded by Mr. Shaner. Discussion by the public on this amendment? Discussion by the public? Discussion by council?
Mayor?
Dr. Rennie?
My rationale for this is, and I know that it was pointed out by the representative for the applicant, that in all likelihood, this probably won't ever be built because the county doesn't see it being a necessity. But I guess I wanted to go on the record as making a statement, that we think connectivity is important. And otherwise, if we don't have that connectivity that our staff recommends, all we're doing is creating giant cul-de-sacs. So, that's the rationale behind my amendment and including the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Shaner?
We discussed this very recommendation in committee, and I want to compliment my colleague from Ward One, Councilman Royble, on his vigilance in terms of really digging in and looking at the recommendations and making sure we're not requiring anything that isn't absolutely necessary. And so, it came out of committee without this recommendation. However, I'm going to support this amendment, because I do think it was a compromise that we aren't requiring them to construct simply to dedicate as a right-of-way. And I agree with my colleague from Ward Two, that it does appear that it's important for us to at least reserve this right-of-way for potential future use.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion by council? Further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Royble as a no. We are now back on the main motion. Any further discussion by council? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is number 17E on page four. Excuse me, professional services agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Vortex International Aquatic Play Solutions, Carlton, Texas, for the design and construction of a splash pad at Depot Plaza. General fund and visit Cheyenne fundraising donations.
Thank you. Is there discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Mr. Case? Mr. Case?
Madam Mayor, I do have a conflict on this.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, this item was reviewed under other items for the agenda at the January 22nd, 2019 Finance Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of the Title II of City Code have been met, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved by President Case, seconded by Mr. Royble. Discussion by the public? Discussion by the public? Discussion by council? We've got somebody by the, hold on just a minute.
Looks like Mr. Hornak's coming up. I just wanted to have a brief summary review of what the proposed changes to the contract were.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, members of the committee, Ben Hornak, owners rep for this project, and I'll be the project manager representing the city for this project. I just want to thank you for your diligence in looking into this, and let you know that we do have a representative from Vortex here. We also have some literature from Vortex, if you would like to see that just in general as far as their work and what they do, their applications for their services.
Thank you, Dr. Rennie. Do you care to hear from Vortex?
Yeah, I would. My understanding is, the main change in this is that the date of, that the work will be completed has been moved back to November 1st. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. So, Vortex did not, originally, the contract had an end-of-May date, and Vortex could not foresee hitting that date, so they did not feel like... so they did not feel like signing the contract was within their best interest, and so we went back to that, to Vortex, we agreed on a November completion date, but there is a target of much earlier, um, for a July fourth opening for this splash pad.
And was there any, I presume there was discussion at committee, and maybe the other committee members can enlighten me, but if with a July fourth target, um, was there, none of the parties involved thought there would be a significant impact on Fridays on the plaza? It seems to me that Fridays on the plaza, with all the people that gather there, is gonna have a greater benefit, I love the splash pad, I love the idea, but it's not gonna gather the crowds like Fridays on the plaza does, so I wanted to make sure there wasn't any, with the, with the earlier date, that there wouldn't be any interference.
Mr. Case? I'm gonna start with Mr. Case.
Um, I, my understanding, after talking, and I don't see her, Jason, in the audience tonight, um, with Ms. Moore, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there, um, I'll, I'll let her tackle that one, it'll be, it'll be more concise.
Teresa Moore, Recreation and Events, um, it was discussed at Finance, that, um, our, we do have a concern and thought that, um, they would have to, um, had some fencing and some signage and what have you, if construction was going on at that time, um, I think, um, we could have a conversation with Vortex to see if that is something that, um, they can accommodate, but, um, this was a concern of ours, just because of the numbers of people that, um, go to the plaza during the summer for not just Fridays on the plaza, but other events, Hispanic Fest and Celtic Fest and all of that kind of thing, that it's heavily used, so, um, it was our hope, and there was discussion, that hopefully, um, at that point, that there wouldn't, that most of the construction would be done by the time, um, say, for June, if they do meet the July fourth deadline, that's a possibility, but certainly I think that there's gonna have to be some accommodations, um, for fencing and signage and what have you to mitigate that, um, there's also conversations about, um, because the trolley and the horse-drawn carriages come in that area as well, that they are making accommodations to move them to a different location for their pickup and drop-off points.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case?
Through you, and I think Vortex can probably clarify this a little bit more clearly, I had the same questions, and, um, you know, Mr. Hornak, Hornak did his best answer, but my suspicion, barring a forty-day flood and two months' worth of blizzards prior to, and et cetera, is that by mid-June, we're gonna be on the very tail end of this project, and, and interruptions would be pretty minimal, and if the folks from Vortex could speak to that, it would be great.
I'm Michelle Vaughn, I'm with Vortex Aquatic Structures.
And, uh, just to clarify my comments, I mean, would you suspect that sometime by, approximately mid-June, we're getting pretty close to wrapping this thing up, probably not complete, but pretty close, and that foot-traffic interruptions will be relatively limited to a pretty small footprint by that point?
Certainly that would be the hope, um, the, that, that date that you're looking for is all dependent on our start date, so, that's really, um, what's hinging on things, and then also, um, the planning of this, the design process is a big piece, so how quickly we get through the design process and the approval process of that design will dictate when we can start the construction process, um, our best guess that if everything goes as smoothly as we can anticipate, it will be a five-and-a-half to six-month process from start to finish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
Michelle? I understand you have some handouts to give us, is that correct?
Yeah, sure.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I speak in favor of this, uh, action, I think it's, um, very important that we understand that, of course, the plaza is critical for those public events, but, more than that, we have, uh, that opportunity to do much more on the plaza when the splash pad is operational, it will bring life to that plaza every day, all summer long, once it's operational, and those of us that have observed splashpads elsewhere can attest to that, so, uh, the point of this informational packet is, uh, the people that we're dealing with, uh, this is their profession, they have a lot of experience here, we have a, an experienced construction manager here as well, and certainly, uh, it won't be ideal, but basically, following up on what we're, uh, what we acted on in Finance, is that we will have that opportunity for approximately two-thirds of the rest of summer, for the people who contributed and cared about this project, to take advantage of it, and I would point out that, um, certainly, it, it's unfortunate that we lost time on this project and have to, uh, operate in this particular manner, but I'd point out that the deadline of collecting the funds was July first of this year, so we're way ahead of that schedule, and we're gonna have to make these adjustments, uh, that I believe are, uh, understood by, uh, the Parks and Community, uh, whatever your title is now.
Recreation and Events.
Recreation and Events, and so, uh, I speak in favor of this, I think it's time to get the, uh, surveyor out there, uh, get that information to the designer, uh, get that information to Vortex, and move on this project, so that, uh, certainly, um, construction can be disruptive, but I think with, uh, professional expertise that we have here, we can be sure that, uh, it's not gonna be the disruption that is going to cause us to cancel any events, so I hope we can, uh, move on this and show, uh, the people that contributed, as well as the community, uh, how serious we are about following through on what we promised, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion by council?
Madam Mayor, uh, through you, to Mrs. Moore, please. You know, we've had a lot of discussion, obviously, about how, uh, the, the scheduled events could be impacted by this project, that the events being, uh, Fridays on the plaza, has it been contemplated or, or thought, um, and, and like I said, I, I'm asking you because you would, you would certainly, you would certainly know, but if need be, for two or three Fridays on the plaza, could some of those events be moved to Civic Center Commons, do we have the ability, if need be, um, to do such a thing?
Teresa Moore, Recreation and Events, it is my understanding that we do not, a lot of the events there, they require power for the bands, for the food trucks, for a lot, lots of different things, that those cannot be accommodated at, um, the Commons.
Uh, Mayor, through you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Mrs. Moore, now, is that because we do, we just flat aren't gonna have the capability over here, or, or it won't be ready here by then, I guess I'm, I'm confused, I thought we would have the capability, uh, across the street to eventually have similar types of projects, so are we not gonna have the ability to have power at Civic Center Commons at all, or is it just not gonna be ready in June?
I might defer that to, um, Ms. Allen, as far as the power requirement that is at Commons.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if we had the ability to move it, really was.
Um, I know we are planning on having events, um, that, what we're doing it with, I said we're contemplating a mobile stage where we'd be bringing in, that kind of thing, I know there is some power, but I'm not sure exactly of the, um, the requirements, we are also looking at having other events there, so I, there is perhaps some conflict between, um, the two facilities, but we have not, um, contemplated moving Fridays on the plaza to the Commons, we have looked at other types of events there.
Okay, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, through you, if, if we could, um, if we could ask a city engineer just to follow up on my question regarding the, the power capabilities across the street.
Madam Mayor, through you, um, we do have some power on the site, um, what it will, what we, the requirements will be specific to a, what event goes on in there, um, we'd have to look at it, so.
Okay, um, just so I can, Madam Mayor, through you, uh, just to follow up, um, is it, just for future reference, um, in case we ever do have an Edge Fest, or that's, I mean, that's something I could foresee happening there in the future, would we, would we, again, based on the type, I mean, if we have a, uh, for this type of venue, a larger musical type festival or something like that, do we have the capability as designed to have something like that there?
I think I would have to, um, speak with the, the event organizers and see what, what the requirements are, so Teresa and I could take a look at it, see what, make sure that we are getting in what we need to get in for those larger events.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Through you, we did also have some discussion in committee, that if there was a conflict on Fridays, they would shut down that construction early, and of course, as Councilman Leiborn said, uh, there would also be fencing up.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Do you have anything to add?
Madam Mayor, I'm, uh, Ben Hornak, uh, just a question, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the public discussion was closed, but, um, so in the, the minutes, um, the action was referred to Finance Committee, is that correct, or is, is this a act, a resolution that's up for vote tonight?
Madam Mayor, this is, um, up for a final vote tonight, um, we put it on our other business in Finance, the normal process would have been, it would have been referred from this body to Finance, we just used a piece of the code to jump this ahead to save some time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that just hinges on when Vortex can actually be given the green light and giggle.
Any other further comments by council? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Luna as a no.
Next item is number eighteen A, contract number one, to modification to contract number sixty-nine eighteen between the City of Cheyenne and FCI Constructors of Wyoming LLC to add the guaranteed maximum price for phase one abatement and demolition of existing site for the municipal court building project, one percent specific purpose sales tax.
Discussion by the public? Discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and I so move.
It's been moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Case, discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Question for Mr. Hornak.
Madam Mayor, through you, Mr. Hornak, um, so, I'm looking at the document that we have, and it is saying that there is, this is contract modification number one, and we are adding one point, or one million four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, um, to the guaranteed maximum price for phase one of the project, which is abatement and demolition, but I can't find anywhere in the contract what the guar, what we've already agreed is the guaranteed maximum price for phase one, could you tell us what that is?
Madam Mayor, through you, um, so, we have not yet established the, the total guaranteed maximum price for the project, so if, if you, uh, currently in the city contract sixty-nine eighteen with FCI, there is a, um, guaranteed maximum price listed on the first page as yet to be determined, and then we have a, uh, construction budget of first and second floor totaling ten point five, essentially ten point five million dollars on the construction budget, that construction budget, the, I'm, I'm sorry, the, um, the, the GMP before you today is part of that ten point five million dollars, so it's the first part within that ten point five million dollars, um, it kind of, in order that FCI might, uh, be given the green light and go ahead with the demolition and, uh, abatement and demolition of that site, so it establishes a hard cost for the city for that particular scope of work, we will yet, um, a- as we're still in this design process, we don't have enough on paper yet to establish a hard guaranteed maximum price for the construction portion of that, um, of that work, but the GMP for phase one of the demolition and abatement, plus the GMP for the guaranteed maximum price, will not equal more than that ten point five million dollars.
Madam Mayor, through you.
Mr. Shaner.
Mr. Hornak, not quite following that, um, and maybe this language isn't, isn't quite accurate, but it's saying, we're increasing the GMP for phase one by one million four-hundred-and-thirty-two seven-eight-three, so what is currently the GMP for phase one? What is the number we're adding one million four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand two?
Perhaps, uh, uh, Vicky Nemec can speak a little bit better, more clearly than I can, I'm sorry.
Vicky Nemec, Public Works, we are not adding one million four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars to an already established GMP, we are adding the one million four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars to the original contract amount of twenty-one thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for FCI, that is all we are establishing at this point, there is no GMP, um, in the, in FCI's contract at this time, the only contract we have with FCI at this point is for the twenty-one thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, this simply adds the phase one costs, which is abatement, demolition, and site preparation, so that we have a site that's ready to construct, so that's the phase one portion, phase two, in the schedule, is not scheduled to come, we're not scheduled to have the GMP for phase two, which is the construction of the building itself, until March fourth.
Madam Mayor, through you, I think I'm, I think the light bulb might have just gone on, so Director, is this accurate, so, um, the original contract, uh, we had twenty-one thousand, and now, we're adding in this one point four, um, which is what FCI says is the maximum amount we will charge to get you through phase one.
Mayor, through you, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
I have a question. Ms. Nemec, so, the twenty-one thousand dollars that were currently in the contract, was that for analysis of, uh, this project, so that we could determine what this, what was the twenty-one thousand dollars for?
Through you, Mayor, Vicky Nemec, Public Works, the twenty-one thousand dollars is for pre-construction service fee compensation, the, uh, contract identifies that as the CMAR's fee for the pre-construction services to per, pursue into section, some of the other sections, two-point-one-point, two-point-one, two-point-two, and two-point-three of this agreement, and the contract, um, documents show be for the sum of twenty-one thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, uh, payment of the CMAR's pre-construction service fee shall occur on a monthly basis as pre-construction services are completed, in accordance with the terms and conditions, so, uh, I would defer to, to the project manager to describe what that might, uh, be, but that is, in fact, the pre-construction services that they, FCI is providing.
Madam Mayor, Ben Hornak, uh, with TC Solutions, so, um, that's, that's a, a very good question, and it's- So that's a very good question, and it's -- it can be confusing. The city has decided to enact a CMAR process to this construction project, and what you do in that process, and it really helps to ensure that the city's best, the city receives the best price for the work to be done. And so the people that you hire to, or we have hired FCI in order to have them do pre-construction services. That service includes the budget estimate and analysis that they are currently doing to get us to a GMP amount, and then it also includes constructibility reviews, working hand-in-hand with the design team so that you can hurt the cats essentially a little bit with the design team. So it really helps to bring in the contractor as early as possible in this process in order to, you know, one of the advantages is to keep the design team within that project budget that you're shooting for. So the contractor continually does it, estimates what the designer has designed and says, yep, we're still within budget, or hey, we're going over budget, we need to fix the design here. So it helps us maintain the total project budget that we're shooting for on this project, if that --
Thank you.
Hopefully that makes sense.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Dr. Rennie.
In reading through the contract, like page 11 says that talks about the submission of the guaranteed maximum price and the proposal, and then it's how it's determined, and it refers back to the definition. And so there's references all the way through this to the GMP being approved before the contract is adopted, and yet we're leaving it open-ended with the "to be determined" in there. So I guess my question is, before I vote on this, at some point, I presume as Phase Two comes along, that'll be presented to us, or by the act of approving the contract tonight, are we just turning it loose?
Madam Mayor. Yes?
Madam Mayor, through you, to Dr. Rennie, Sylvia Hackel, City Attorney. The contract to which you referred, Dr. Rennie, has actually already been approved by the council and signed. So you have already approved the process by which you will in pieces receive each phase of the GMP. So what's before you tonight is solely Contract Modification Number One, which is the first page of this agenda item, and it provides solely for the addition of the Phase One services of the 1,432,783. So the underlying contract, which is attached as an exhibit, has already been approved by the council. I hope that clarifies and doesn't confuse.
Thank you, Counselor.
Other discussion by council? Further discussion by council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is number 28 on page five. Designation of Official Voting Delegate and Alternate Delegate for the City of Cheyenne at the February 21st, 2019 Wyoming Association of Municipalities Winter Conference Business Meeting to be held in Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Discussion by the public. Do I -- oh, this is Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to delegate Dr. Mark Rennie as official voting delegate and Mr. Shaner as alternate delegate, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council? Discussion by council. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Escobal as a no.
2B, Appointment of Alan Cunningham to the Board of Public Utilities.
Discussion by the public. Discussion by the public. Do I have a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by President Case. Further discussion by council? Okay, as this is a mayoral appointment pursuant to the state statute, I will not be voting. All those in favor of this appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
See, Announcement of Public Hearing to be held February 11th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, to determine whether conditions of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute 15-1-402 exist for Lot 4, Block 2, Swan Ranch Rail Park, Third Filing, and a portion of adjacent Tundra Drive, right-of-way, Laramie County, Wyoming, located at the southeast corner of Tundra Drive and Clear Creek Parkway. Announcement of a public hearing to be held February 11th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, to determine compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute 15-1-402 exist for Lots 6 and 7, Block 1, and all of that 16-foot alley located in Block 1 except east 8 feet adjacent to Lots 3 and 4, Block 1, Countryside Edition, Laramie County, Wyoming, located at the southwest intersection of Countryside Avenue and Whitney Road. Other business.
Thank you. We are going to adjourn for five minutes before any other business from the public or council.